You're on record.
All right, good evening, everybody. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that it is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6 at sec of the New Jersey Open Public Meeting. Zach, Nora, please call the board.
Mr. Berkowitz.
Here.
Ms. Rignani.
Here.
Mr. Jaskiewicz.
Here.
Mr. Kaplan.
Here.
Mr. Reddy.
Present.
Mr. Willings.
Here.
We also have our board planner, Mr. Chadwick, our board engineer.
President.
Mr. Lemanowicz.
Here.
And our board attorney, Mr. Johnson.
Here.
All right, please stand for the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which is a republic whose sense one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, Mr. Turner, would you be so kind as to swear in your...
Mr. Chadwick, can you raise your right hand, please? To swear that any testimony that we give tonight should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Yes. Mr. Lemanowicz, raise your right hand, please. Do you swear that any testimony that we give tonight should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay, all that's taken care of. Uh, we have some resolutions to approve. I'm not quite sure how we're doing this. We have...
The first two, the first, the first, second, and last one, they're all the same people, but the last one, we might want to do separate because it's a resolution to dismiss the application.
Okay, so we'll do the first two, 2405 and 2410. Can someone please, uh, make a motion?
Sumo.
Second?
Jaskiewicz.
All right, Nora?
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Jaskiewicz.
Yes.
Reddy.
Yes.
Willings.
Yes.
There you go.
That's it, right?
That's it.
That's it.
Okay, uh, application 2346.
Sumo.
Second.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Rignani.
Yes.
Jaskiewicz.
Yes.
Reddy.
Yes.
Willings.
Yes.
Okay, and last, application 2315. This will be the approval to dismiss.
Jaskiewicz. Willing, second.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Jaskiewicz.
Yes.
Reddy.
Yes.
Willings.
Yes.
All right, um, at this, uh, point in the meeting, is there anyone who wishes to address the board on an, uh, item that is not currently on tonight's agenda? So we will, uh, move right into the applications on tonight's agenda. Application 2404, Bona Shukla and Rajneesh Tiwari. Good evening.
Can you raise your right hand, please? Are you, who's going to testify, just you or both of you? Okay, great. All three? You're all the... Okay, uh, do you swear or affirm that any testimony that you give tonight should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, starting over here on my left, state your name, spell your last name, you could put your hands down. And what's your first name?
David Regan.
And you're... Great, thank you. You can be seated.
All square. Okay, so we are here to legalize a 650-foot, square-foot patio, a 35-inch-high retaining wall, uh, 12.37 square-foot stairs, and then we have a little issue on impervious coverage. So if you could just tell us, uh, a little bit about your application, please.
So, uh, when we bought this house, this is a corner lot with the driveway is so back in the house so that, uh, all the area has been taken like a driveway, and then, but this house has a lot of green space, and for the family time, we would like to build a patio so that we can enjoy the family time, uh, so, uh, me apart on, and also to, like, I do understand, uh, so we also planted 40 privacy trees to make more greener. This house is covered with all the greenery. I have some pictures I can share if you would like to, uh...
Sure.
So...
Yep, we do. Okay, uh, are there, are there all the same pictures on the same sheet?
Same pictures, same pictures on the same.
All right, so we'll mark that A1.
Same thing. So you built it before knowing you needed a permit?
Yep.
So, uh, sir, when he just bought his house last year and, uh, we, we talked to our contractor, he talked to the town, we have our contractor as well, and as for him, we don't need the permit, so we started building, but the moment we came to know, we stopped everything, and, uh, we immediately started looking for the permission.
So you started the work, somebody called, you didn't have a permit, so you stopped the work, so then you went to get a permit, now you're here for us to approve, which you've already done.
So what happened, uh, we have a contractor, when we started, we, uh, checked with our contractor, and he checked with the town that we, uh, we, for the patio, we don't need the permit, so we started the work, but then, uh, one of the inspector came, first time, I believe, he said that it is fine, you can keep carry on, and then we submitted the application, then we find out, okay, we need to, uh, we, uh, we called, uh, inspector called, and we submit the application to get this approved, now we are here.
But it's completed?
It's, uh, I would say, it's a patio is completed, but grass and other area, the, where the work was there, we stopped the work, after that, we did not do any work. So you can see the pictures, like, it's still the unfinished area of the grass and other areas are there.
Your, your survey shows a concrete porch. At, next to your property line, is that yours?
No, that is not ours, sir.
It just shows up on the...
No, no, in my property line, I don't have a space in backyard, and no space for the, like, uh, I would say, my previous owner, he do not have anything to set, uh, so we just wanted to, uh, build a small patio and the stairs, so enjoy the, uh, time, yeah.
What, what is the construction of the patio? Is it dry laid, is it concrete?
Uh, it's a, uh, stones.
Pavers?
Pavers, yeah.
Are they, are they grouted together, or is it just sand?
Sand.
Would water go through them?
I have a contractor, he can answer, but, yeah.
Sand.
Yeah.
Wait, hold on, sir.
Sand?
Yeah.
The water will seep through?
John, let me swear my... Raise your right hand. Do you swear that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Could you state your name, spell your last name, please?
My name is Christian, my last name is Timbe, T-I-M-B-E.
You built the patio?
Yes.
And the water, if I put all was on it, would seep through?
No, how would you, the fire, you know, like, the base, the base QP, and the stone dust, and we put the pavers.
What's in between the pavers?
Between the pavers, uh, first, we, we dig six inches down, we put the QP and the stone dust leveling, we put the pavers.
And then in between the pavers?
Between the paves, there's a 40-inch sand.
Sand, sand. Were you the one who told him he didn't need a permit?
Excuse me?
Were you the one who told him he did not need a permit?
Yeah, because, uh, you know, when, I have some experience of the jobs where the layers, 500 square feet, we don't need the permit, so, and the retaining wall, when it's over the four feet, I, I don't know if Mary, I'm wrong, but over the four feet, we need a permit, so the, the retaining wall is 35 inches, so...
Well, I think the per, the four feet is right, but it's the coverage issue. The, the four feet, high wall, under four feet, no permit, that's correct.
Yes.
It's the coverage issue you didn't get right.
Impervious coverage.
For the pa, for the patio?
Yeah.
For the coverage, so I know it's...
You did not calculate.
Yes, yes.
So, do your neighbors ever get any water problems?
No, of course, you know. No, our house is like in the slope, nobody has a water problem, it's on the hill, like, it's a powder mill high hill.
Yeah.
So nobody has a water problem.
And your neighbors know what's going on, of course?
Yeah, yeah, neighbors all know, we also send all the letters to all our neighbors, even talk to our neighbors, and like, just behind my neighbor, he said that we, once, uh, like, it is complete, they will come to have tea, so, yeah, all neighbors, like, we send it out, all 37, 35 letters, whatever we get it, uh, the whole list, we send it to everyone, and if, we also personally, yeah.
Okay. So just so you know, it doesn't matter how big it is, the patio, it depends on, well, might matter, but it's also the coverage, so it's the amount of area that is now covered by something other than grass, right?
Yes.
So we're worried that the water is not going to your neighbors.
No.
Okay, his neighbors. Okay. Any other questions? Anyone in the public have any questions for the applicant? Okay, uh, anyone in the public wish to speak against this application or for this application? Nobody's come up. Anyone want to make a statement?
Yeah, this is a reasonable request for the family get-together or something like that, and it's not, uh, bothering any neighbors' properties, and, uh, so I'm in favor of it.
Application 2404, Wa, uh, Bona Shukla and Rajneesh Tiwari, 40 Dunedale Road, block 15.6, lot 14, zone R-1M, recommend granting a C-variance to legalize the patio, retaining wall and rear stairs, contrary to section 430-35, column 13.
Second, ready?
Mr. Berkowitz.
Yes.
Ms. Rignani.
Yes.
Mr. Jaskiewicz.
Yes.
Mr. Kaplan.
Yes.
Mr. Patty. Is she here for enough of this application?
Yeah, he's here.
Okay, I know he's here, he, 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 for most of it.
Ready?
Will you hear for most of it? She wants to know.
Yeah, I, I heard, I heard, yes, I'm ready.
Patty, yes, Mr. Reddy?
Yes.
Mr. Willings?
Yes.
Okay, uh, the application is, uh, granted. After the next meeting, once we approve the resolution, uh, you're technically free to build it, which you've already done, so enjoy.
After you get your zoning permit.
After you get your zoning permit, all right. Did you move into Persippany a year ago and buy this house, or were you in Persippany for that?
We were renting the apartment in Persippany, so like, we are in Persippany from almost seven years, but we were renting the apartment here.
So now you're a property owner, we have rules in our town.
Yes.
Got it?
Sure, next time, I will, yeah, make sure that I get it. Thank you.
All right, have a good night.
Good night.
All right, next up, application 2409, Mary Jean Wallace, 46 Berlin Road. Good evening, welcome.
Hi.
Can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Great, state your name, spell your last name, please.
Mary Jean Wallace, W-A-L-L-A-C-E.
Thank you.
All right, so you are looking to construct a driveway, 425 square feet, retaining wall 1.5 feet, uh, front walk, you're going to replace that with 108 square foot, and what's that going to be, made out of?
Brick.
Brick, okay.
Brick now, and it'll just be repainted.
Just new brick, okay, and then a 56-square-foot front landing and stairs. Um, you're here because of your, uh, I guess the fence.
No, sir.
No?
The, uh, expansion of the, there's, there's, it's not the fence, it's the expansion of the...
So it's the driveway setback?
The, the retaining wall.
So this one's the retaining wall?
Yeah, I believe that's the retaining wall. On the right-hand side, I think.
The zoning report talks about, do you put a new fence in?
Um, yes, replacement fence, but I went to, to, um, the, um, zoning board, and they gave me permission, there was a, a straight replacement, there was no variation.
But, uh, they got a hole over here saying it was right on the property line, it's still on the property line.
Yes, right, like, I brought that to the zoning board's attention.
Yeah.
And they gave me permission, and they didn't, they didn't, they even said I didn't need a permit.
So you replaced an existing fence?
Yes, sir, completely same, same square foot, same, same footprint.
Elevation and everything else, the same?
Yep.
And get rid of that one, so it's only a driveway.
Yeah, so now it's a driveway. Okay.
You want to put a retaining wall on the right-hand side of your driveway, right?
There is currently a retaining wall there made out of, um, railroad ties, and it's, um, it's decaying, and so the driveway, it all started because the driveway needed replacing because it's, it's, there was roots going under it, it was cracking, and I, and the, I also needed new front steps, so I said, well, while I'm doing it, just make this one project, so basically, I'm re, I'm replacing the railroad tie retaining wall with, with stone. I'm, if you face my property, the, there's a garden to the right of my driveway, I'm eliminating that, and that's where I want the expansion. I have, um, now I have an SUV, so with, I, I park as far to the right, but if I have company or somebody's going to get in my car with me, it's a little narrow to get in and out of the car, plus I have, I have a bad back of a diagnosis with stenosis, so, so removing the snow is a challenge to lift it up and over that wall, by expanding it, I can just push it to the side, and that would help my back.
So the curb cut, is, is a curb cut on the street going to be expanded as well?
There was no plan to, I was just going to leave curb cut as is, and then...
Okay.
Just use it to...
Just wanted to make sure you didn't potentially need another variance.
So you're not going to widen it? The driveway?
Well, she is, I am, I am expanding, yes, sir.
No, as you go up to the street?
Oh, the curb cut, no, I'm not, the point was not to expand that, the curb cut, no.
We're talking a couple feet, appears to be a couple. Yeah, any other questions from the board? Good on both sides, all right, uh, any questions of the applicants from the public? Uh, no, come forward, anyone in the public wish to speak for or against this application? Nobody, all right, statement from the board?
It's a minimis in nature, it sounds like you're just repair, replacing some ties that need to be, uh, moved and cleaned up, be a little easy on you, uh, be voted for.
Anyone want to make a motion?
Application 24:09, Mary Jean Wallace, 46 Berlin Road, block 283, lot number 13, zone R-4, to issue or grant a C-variance to construct driveway, includes four full driveway expansion, retaining walls, front walk, contrary to section 430-11D and section 430-27510.
Second, Jaskiewicz.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Rignani.
Yes.
Jaskiewicz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Patty.
Yes.
Reddy.
Yes.
Yep. All right, congratulations, enjoy, thanks for making your property look good. All right, and for the main event, 2205, Outfront Media.
You didn't invite me.
Yes, thank you.
I did, uh, I did, I had everyone kind of...
You didn't? You didn't?
Sure did.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thanks for your patience, Matthew Weiss, Price Me Showman and Garmenio, on behalf of the applicant. So, um, Outfront is here today to, uh, propose to construct and operate a single pole, double-faced, off-premise, outdoor advertising sign, you all know it is a billboard, um, within the township's B1 district, um, it is intended to show to Interstate Route 80, which is, of course, a well-traveled highway. Um, the property is leased by Outfront, um, they currently hold a state permit issued by NJDOT for a multi-message billboard, um, you will see that later on, and the proposed sign will be, as I said, constructed and operated by Outfront. Billboards are not permitted in the B1 district, so the applicant will make its case in favor of a D1 use variance for innot-conforming use in that district, as well as a D1 use variance for a second principal use in that district. We've seen all the review letters, we have one from Mr. Chadwick, uh, dated, I believe, yesterday is the most recent one, and we have one from Mr. Lemanowicz, which I think was dated April 9th, which we received today. It is at block 722, lot 2, that's 959 US 46 in the township. It will be a, generally what we call it is a 14 by 48 billboard, the actual, um, measurements are 13 feet and 7 and 3/4 inches by 47 feet and 3 inches on each side, um, it will be 60 feet tall. So I have three witnesses that I would like to present to the board, um, the first is John Antal, who is the Outfront Media NJ General Manager, um, he'll provide some factual testimony for the board, the second is Diego Duarte, uh, of Dynamic Engineering, who will be our engineer, and then finally, we will have George Williams of Nishwain Group, who is our planner. Um, if there are no questions from the board, I'd like to call Mr. Antal.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name and spell your last name, please.
Name is John Antal, last name A-N-T-A-L.
Okay, Mr. Antal, can you give the board the benefit of your personal background and experience, please?
Yes, so, again, my name is John Antal, uh, General Manager for Outfront Media, New Jersey, um, I have a degree in marketing from the University of South Florida, I have been in the outdoor advertising business for 21 years, all of, with, all those years with Outfront or its predecessor companies, um, I've been the General Manager in this role since 2012 here in the state of New Jersey. Um, as my responsibilities are for my position, I oversee the entire market, including all of its operations, including sales and all the things that go along with that, and under the application here tonight, I am in charge of directing the market's efforts for new billboard locations. Um, if you're not familiar with Outfront Media, we are a national outdoor advertising company, we are traded on the New York Stock Exchange under the symbol O U T, um, to be a little bit more specific toward New Jersey, um, we've been doing business in the state of New Jersey, um, either as Outfront or predecessor company since the 1940s, and we currently operate, uh, over 3,500 displays, um, 99 of which are digital, similar to the application that is here before you tonight, um, we have been operating digital billboards in the state of New Jersey since 2009.
Okay, um, so, uh, before we move on, Mr. Johnson, we submitted, um, what I'm going to show the board is the first exhibit with the site plan 10 days ago, would you like being a marketer, or would you...
If it's submitted, you don't need to market.
Great, okay, so, um, Mr. Antal, I'm going to show you an area. I'm going to hand out some copies to the board as well, while you look at that, um...
We don't have them.
Uh, do you have them, if you have them, I'll, I'll just, I have copies for you to make sure that you, you know,...
Is that this?
Yeah.
Yes, it is.
We have it.
Okay.
We have it.
Oh, boy.
So anyone else want one on standing?
Is the same as this?
Yes, I just have a bigger version, if anyone has trouble seeing what's on the paper. Good, everybody good?
Good.
Great. Okay, so, John, um, what is this, the thing?
Uh, this aerial that you see before you is, uh, is the property in question that we're speaking about tonight, um, located along, uh, 959 US Highway 46, um, but obviously, the, uh, the application before you tonight is for, uh, the piece of property which is adjacent to Interstate 80, that's just where the sign will be located and visible to.
Can you just reiterate for the board what Outfront's relationship to the site is?
Sure, uh, we are a lessee of the property, um, as you can see from the aerial and from just being in town in general, you understand that that property is commercial in nature, um, there's currently an operating office building with multiple tenants, um, in, in it.
Great, okay, um, and what is the area and zone like, from your experience from the aerial?
Yeah, it, it's, it's business in nature, it's, it's commercial, it's kind of industrial-ish in nature, um, as I stated, it's, you know, it's an office complex, um, with multiple parking spots, and, uh, this is kind of tucked away at the, uh, the edge of the property adjacent to I-80.
And so it is intended to show to I-80?
It will be showing to I-80, yes.
Okay, thank you. So I mentioned earlier, uh, that we have, or rather than Outfront, has a permit from NJDOT to operate this sign, is that correct?
That is correct.
So I'm going to mark that A1, this is not in the packet, um, so I'm going to show this to you, and I'm going to hand it out to everybody else, do you recognize that, Mr. Antal?
I do recognize this, yes.
Okay. There's a little more for you in this packet, I think would be beneficial.
Like what little more?
Uh, it's the, that permit is old, we have to renew it every year, so we have proof in there that we've renewed for this test.
In, in the packet being passed around, the, uh, it consists of four pages, the first two pages are the original letter that we received from the Department of Transportation in 2020, um, notifying us of the approval of the permit, and each year subsequent to that, we have renewed that permit, um, with the state, typically the renewals take place, I believe it's in May or June.
They turn over in May, um, sorry, I'm not this way.
Yeah, they, they, they turn over in May, um, so the, the two pages, um, that are following the letter are the most active, or the most recent pages indicating that that permit is still active, and in the next 30, 45 days, we will renew this permit again, so it has remained in good standing with the DOT since its original issuance, um, on July 9th of 2020.
Okay, great, um, having this permit, what does that mean for, for Outfront, from DOT?
Yeah, essentially, um, the NJDOT has, uh, given us this permit, signifying that we've met all conditions of approval from their standpoint, um, whether it be for traffic safety, um, or spacing, or any of the other multiple criteria that they require, um, for placement of a billboard along an interstate highway, um, so we've met all those criteria 100%, and we've been granted this permit accordingly.
Okay, great, um, and what, I think you might have said this, but let's just reiterate again to make sure, um, what are, you know, with, with respect to safety concerns, issuing a permit, what do they do?
Well, they, when a, an application is submitted, they go out, they do a field survey, they physically not just view the property, but also they ride the highway to make sure that everything that we've applied for meets all of the safety concerns and/or uh, various spacings from, from different, uh, things along the highway, including that of other billboards or, or unbuilt billboards with permits, um, and once we've met all those at 100%, we're issued the permit.
Okay, um, you mentioned spacing requirements, let's use this as an example, um, you're aware that one of the requirements is that multi-message billboard needs to be at least 300, sorry, 3,000 linear feet apart on the same side of the highway, correct?
That is correct.
If theoretically, Outfront were to attempt to apply for a billboard that is 2,999 feet and 6 inches away from the next posted billboard, wouldn't it be approved that?
No, it would be denied because it doesn't meet the 3,000, it is black or white, there's no gray area with the DOT on an issue such as that.
Or any issue.
Yeah, espe, especially with the, the spacing and, uh, traffic safety.
And that's just the same highway?
Along the same, the same side of the roadway along the highway, yes.
And it has to be showing to the same highway, correct?
Okay, so like, if there were one right behind Route 46, that would be allowable?
As long as you can't see it on 80.
As long as you can't see it.
What about Route 53 in the township, it's not divided?
I'm sorry, say that again?
Route 53 in the township is not divided.
Okay.
With that, 3,000 feet...
From a digital billboard, the 3,000 feet would, would be consistent, however, the spacing from a static billboard would differ.
Right, I know that. If it's a divided highway, it's 3,000 feet measured on either side.
I'm not sure divided is part of the DOT criteria, I believe they use limited access highway.
Well, you don't have a deal anyways.
Okay.
There, there's no issue with your findings, correct?
No, there's no issue.
Are you aware of the most...
Can I, can I ask a question?
Of course.
Is that with respect to just permitted billboards or constructed billboards, in other words, what are they taking into consideration, does it have to be constructed? Does it have to be constructed?
No. The DOT reviews unbuilt permits as well as built.
So if there's a, if there's a unbuilt permitted billboard within three thou, three thousand feet, you're out of luck.
For a digital billboard, yes.
For a digital billboard, okay.
That is correct.
We just approved on Route forty-six pretty close by. That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, correct, but it's not on the same highway. And it's not, it's not visible.
So you won't be able to see this from forty-six?
You'll hear testimony of that effect.
And that, that is correct.
Okay.
And just to clarify, if I may, DOT would not allow, we'd have to get a separate permit to V C from forty-six. There, this is intended to V C from eighty, and that's what.
From eighty only.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, so I think we kind of hit on this, but are you aware of, of any nearby billboard permits?
Along Route eighty, I am not.
Okay, thank you. Now, we also have, our Outfront also has gone to the site to kind of map out where the billboard's going to be and take, you know, simulations from the roadway, et cetera, correct?
Yes, we have. We, we've been to the location multiple times, mostly recently in March. And in order to really complete the visuals for our application, we brought a crane to the site. We used a panel attached to that crane at the appropriate height that's in the application before you tonight.
Which is what?
Excuse me?
Which is what?
Sixty feet. Sixty feet to the top. So from there, we were able to use that panel to scale out the billboard simulation, which is going to be shown to you, which gives you the specific visibility from eighty for that billboard from both the express and the local lanes. So we brought the crane on site. We took, our professionals took photos from both directions in both the express and local lanes, and were able to render an accurate simulation of what the billboard will look like once it is constructed at the height and at the size proposed to you before, before you tonight.
So I'm handing you what I've marked A two, premarked A two. Is, is this what you were just referring to?
Yes. What has been marked as A two is the packet that I was briefly describing.
Okay, so one of, you're being handed out the, the simulations now. Let's wait till everyone has it. I'm trying to help to review it, but if you could tell them how many pages it is.
The packet being handed out to you consists of seven pages.
They're marking this up, Johnson?
A two.
Okay, so, Mr. Antal, why don't we walk the board through what they're going to see on each page?
Absolutely. So obviously, the cover page details everybody who was involved in the, the making of this packet, when the crane was on the site, as well as when the photos were taken, as well as the sign height and dimensions that are viewed in the, in the each photo. The second page, the first photo that you see in the packet, shows the crane clearly along with the panel that's been hung to indicate, at the, at the appropriate height, sixty feet. And that crane was used to size and scale the image of the billboard. This, again, this is taken seven hundred and fifty feet traveling eastbound, and if you know the road, you know it's from the express lanes, heading in the east direction.
Okay, and what's, what is on the next page?
The, the next page is, again, the, the same visual, but from the, well, referred to as the local lanes, traveling eastbound, again, at seven hundred and fifty feet away. And the page after that is where we start to view the sign from the westbound lanes. Obviously, there's a couple of variations here for, for westbound, both the express and the local lanes, because as it is currently, it is, what I would refer to as buried behind trees or completely blocked by trees. We have begun the process of discussing a plan to trim and/or remove those trees with the Department of Transportation, but we didn't go too far down the road because we wanted to be before the board first, before anything was done or money was spent with the DOT regarding the plan for that.
I'm sure we're going to want to know how many trees are going to come down.
Okay. That's fair.
You, you are up next to the right lane. Are you able to get a permit to get in there?
Our engineer will address that. So what's on this next page? Look, go ahead.
Just so you're aware, another billboard company that.
This is a chat, please skip to the motor.
I'm sorry. There's another company that is doing business in the township and had a similar condition, and the contractor mistakenly cleared out all the trees.
Mistakenly cleared all the trees.
So.
Can you confirm?
It's just, it's a, a situation that happened, and we certainly don't want it to happen again.
Okay. It's, it's, sorry, it's under, it's understandable. I mean, we would, we would work with the Department of Transportation and only cut what they would allow us to cut or remove what they allowed us to remove. We anticipate this, this site falling under what is called a V C M, or a Vegetation Canopy Management Agreement with the DOT. And there are very specific rules to what can be opened for a view shed.
But that's in there right of way, correct?
I, I believe our engineer will be able to, to go a little bit more in depth about that, because as, as you mentioned, obviously, the area is wet, and there are some things that have to be taken into consideration and, and agencies that we would have to work with. Obviously, if the trees can't be touched at all, we don't really have a viable sign for that side. It just doesn't, you can't see it. Even with leaves off, you can tell how, how pushed back it is. So if.
You do a one-sided building.
Correct. But if, but if the, if we were able to work with the DOT and whoever else is involved in it, and eventually have them treat, cut, or come to an agreement, or what that would be, then, you know, we could obviously come back in front of the board, looking to, you know, change the approval if that was a condition of the approval, that we'd have to submit the plan that gets approved by the DOT and D E P. We'd be more than happy to, to make that a condition, or, or come back before the board and just kind of clarify the scope of the project that would be undertaken, to make sure everybody's on the same page.
Are the trees that are potentially affected only located within the right-of-way? Or are some located outside of the right-of-way?
I think, again, it might be better if the engineer addresses this. I don't want to make Mr. Antal walk too far out of his expertise. Well, he's not even an expert witness, so.
So, John, how do we approach the approval?
Well, they, it would be the same way we did before. You have to get a permit from, in prior cases, only dot. But in your case, it's going to be dot, pen, and D E P.
But what about the, the fact that the sign might be either one-sided or two?
Well, if you can't get us a permit, if it's one-sided, it's fine. You don't really have to do anything.
I mean, from, from a construction standpoint, or from just an operational standpoint, in my point of view, I would essentially build it for the two, but only make the one-side operational should I get permission.
So it's the same structure?
It would, it would potentially be the same structure. Again, if it's a condition of approval for the board that you determine, if I can't get the one-side cut, I have to come back and change the structure, reconfigure it so it is only for the one side. I, we're happy to deal with, with that as it comes.
I think initially, when you presented, and the reason we tabled this till now, was there was no information on how much you would have to top the trees. I think the game initially started, you know, top some of the trees.
We got to hang up with, with a D E P permit.
Right, exactly. Two things, okay. Anyway. The trees that you have to cut are not on your property, are they? They're on somebody else's property?
I think, again, sorry, I think, again, it would be best if, I, I just don't want, you know, the engineer can address all of this. I, I don't want to, I, I apologize, but it would just be better if we let Mr. Duarte address this. I also, sorry, before we move on very quickly, unfortunately, everyone has pretty soft voices. If you could all, it's a little tough to hear everyone when they speak. If the board members wouldn't mind just leaning forward, I think the reporter, I can see her straining a little bit, too. Okay, so let's just finish up the simulation real quick, please.
Yeah, so obviously, the, the third to last page, or the, yeah, is seven hundred and fifty feet traveling westbound from the express lanes with a potential tree removal. And then the next page is seven hundred and fifty feet from the local lanes, westbound, with the existing condition of the trees as taken in March, and then a simulation of what it could potentially look like with trees removed and/or cut.
Now, this, these simulations with the trees cut, this isn't Outfront, Outfront's not committing to it looking exactly like this. This is just to demonstrate what it might look like.
Correct. So this was not where we think the view shed will be. It was really to show that you can still see the crane, and you can see the panel, and then it's scaled appropriately, and that this is an accurate depiction of what it would look like if it was built, if those trees did not exist. Obviously, the view shed and the way it would look when it is done, if trees are removed, is dependent on the agreement we come to with the DOT and any other government agencies involved in that process.
And of course, again, the board will absolutely be able to see and review all of this before there's any final approval or billboard built. Okay, so let's, let's talk a little bit about the idea of multi-message signs. What, what are some of the, the flexibilities of multi-message signs? What are some of the benefits of a multi-message sign that you can explain to the board?
Sure. So traditional billboard that's not digital, there's people who have to go out there on site to do all of the installations of the advertising. Every time that you have to change an ad, you physically have to go to the structure, you have to climb the structure, you have to hook up all your safety cables, you got to be securely affixed to the structure before you do anything, you got to deal with the wind, the rain, and every, all, all the other elements. The biggest operational difference here is that all of the creative, the copy, the ad copy that's displayed on the sign is all changed and monitored remotely. So there's no need to physically be at the structure for what is really the most common use of the billboard, which is to display ad copy. From an advertiser's standpoint, it's really something that allows them to be more timely and relevant with their advertising messages. They don't have to wait for material to be printed from a printer, they don't have to wait for it to be shipped, they don't have to wait for it to be brought out on a truck and hung on the, the sign itself. It can easily be uploaded directly to the sign through a secure internet connection, and it could be displayed instantaneous. They have the ability to have different ads throughout different times of the day. They can, you know, a restaurant can promote a breakfast, lunch, and dinner special at the time of day that makes sense for them. They don't have to just have one consistent ad up all the time, kind of letting people know where they're located. So really, having that flexibility has been a, a real tremendous help for our local, as well as regional and national advertisers in our business.
How often do the messages change on the board?
The proposed message, the sign, would change in accordance with DOT regulations of every eight seconds. And as this board has had other billboard applications, I'm sure you've heard, that is strictly adhered to. The DOT does not allow scrolling, flashing, movement, appearance of movement. They don't allow any type of animation, and, you know, it's, it's something that if you violate, you run the risk of losing your business license, not just a permit for a location, but they can, they can take you out of business.
Okay, and how often do, do multi-message signs like this one require maintenance by the operating company?
We would have scheduled maintenance approximately four times a year, typically once a quarter, just for kind of your standard cleaning and things like that. There's usually nothing else that would bring us out to the site preventatively. There, if there's ever an issue with the location, it is monitored both by computer and by camera remotely. So if there were an issue with something that needed to be addressed, or we saw that some part or piece was beginning to fail, we could proactively send our group out to, to, you know, address the issue and change out any parts that needed to be changed.
Okay, great. What about benefits to the, the public, the general public, the public of Parcypany, et cetera?
Yeah, so with digital billboards, another great ability for us is that we're able to provide both public service messaging to government entities, to nonprofit organizations. We're, we're able to do these things without any additional cost for the organizations because there's no printing or installation. The hard cost is nil. So we're able to use time on the signs to promote public goods for, you know, whether it's raising money for cancer research, or, you know, a town event that's coming up that, that wants to be promoted to bring people to food trucks or something like that.
And so you'd be willing to enter into an agreement with the town to provide those services?
Yes, actually, we, we have designated protocols that we're going to be talking about, so that's, that's a, that's a great segue.
We'll get there in about three seconds. I want to stay on track here, but thank you, Mr. Johnson. So I'm handing you what I've premarked A three, Mr. Antal, and what is that?
A three is a packet that contains examples of both emergency messaging, public service messaging, and municipal messaging. It consists of.
And what are the sizes of these signs in the presentation?
Sorry.
What are the sizes of the signs you're showing us here? Are they the same size as your sign?
Great question. As we go through, I'll con, I'll confirm that for you. All right, everybody's got it? Excellent. First section, some samples of emergency messaging, obviously amber alerts, missing persons, two, two of the, the biggest things that, you know, billboards would be used for, get, get the word out about people who've gone missing. Both of the signs pictured are the same size as what is before you tonight. The second section is labeled as public service advertising. There's some of our nonprofit partners that we have throughout the state of New Jersey, Valerie Fund Community Food Bank of New Jersey, Boys and Girls Clubs in New Jersey. And all of the pictures in that section are also the same size as the sign proposed here tonight. And then the final section of the packet is municipal announcements. As I mentioned, some municipalities do events, some of them just kind of welcome people to the town. It's really all over the place. The first picture is a campaign that downtown Denville runs to kind of use the, the billboard a little bit more as, as almost they're an advertiser, right? They're, they're enticing people, they want people to come to downtown, spend their money, they want them to dine, they want them to explore. And then, you know, the, the next one is from, is from Stafford Township, just kind of letting people know that there's help for them if they need things with shopping or pharmacy or socialization. And then we had our creative team put together just some, some sample examples of what Parcypany Troy Hills could use the sign for. The first example, just kind of a, a welcome-to type of sign, letting people know where they are as they're traveling along eighty. Things like volleyball registration, booking a tee time at the Knoll Country Club, and, you know, congratulating the, the graduating class are just some examples. And these are the types of examples that other townships have used along our digital network as well. Okay.
All very good examples. What percentage of the time that the sign is on, do we run things like this versus from advertisers?
So.
What, what percentage of time is a sign promoting these local benefits and charities versus the businesses that you're advertising with?
Typically, it's ten to fifteen percent. However, with, with the protocols, we are going to be, and I'll, I'll just jump ahead a little bit here. We are going to be setting aside time to ensure that the town has the ability to use it. This is not going to be something where we'll put it up if it's available. We're going to designate time so the town has it. Now, the town may not have something to promote, and that's fine, but we work with towns to have what we call an evergreen message. So if they don't have a particular event coming up, that they do have something in place to, to utilize the time. The way we will be providing it to the town is they will have one eight-second display every advertising loop. So in this case, it would equate to twelve and a half percent of the time. So of the eight advertisers running in rotation, the town will be one of them.
What about other, the, the town is defined as any charitable organization within the town or the town itself?
In this case, the town getting twelve and a half percent of the time is strictly for the municipality of Parcypany Troy Hills.
Okay, so then the other charities in the town, do they have an allocated time, too?
They do not have an allocated time. They would be allowed to use it. However, if the town would like us to work with them and make that part of the town's time, we are happy to. It depends on how the town wants to use the time that's been set aside for them.
As long as, to be clear, the town does not monetize the opportunity.
Correct. It's, it's not something to be resold for a sponsorship or, or something like that. But obviously, the town has partnerships. Good example I can give is like a food bank, a local food bank. Maybe it's not run by the town, but it's an organization that is supported by the town for the town. That would be a relationship that we could take into consideration and know that we can use this on the town's time if the town would like it to be.
So every one of the emergency messaging, the public service, and the municipality, those are all examples of one. So if there's, if the town is running a welcome to Parcypany, and there's an amber alert, welcome to Parcypany comes down, amber alert goes up in that spot?
No, and that's what we'll talk about with Protocol A.
Yeah, why don't we, I appreciate all these questions. You guys are anticipating what we're going to talk about, but let's hand out the protocols so that they can, you can kind of go through with them before we, I think that'll make it easier for everyone to understand what's.
Does the industry have a basic bible that they follow? All the different companies in terms of agreement with the township, or is this unique to your company?
Because it sounds familiar, right, John?
Because we have two, we have two or three at this point, all have submitted, you know, documents of how they structure, or how, how do you get contact, how do we contact you? That kind of thing. The mechanics of it.
The mechanics of it.
It's not an industry standard.
Nobody's got together and said, hey, here's our, here's our book, this is what?
No, it's, it's still a competitive industry, so I don't think we're sharing those types of things, but obviously, in a public setting such as this, it's being, you know, recorded for YouTube, obviously, companies can see what other companies do. This is something that we've been doing, like I said, we've been operating billboards in this state.
There's no uniform, so you'll have to work it out with the administration.
Correct.
But you believe Outfront probably has a competitive advantage over your competition in the sign business because of your service to, to the community?
I don't know if I would see it as a competitive advantage. I think that us being as large of a company as we are, being the dominant player in our industry in this area, we have a responsibility. Whether it's a competitive advantage, I think, doesn't matter. We have a responsibility. We've been here, the longest been operating in the state since the 1940s, we have no plans to go anywhere, we're not, we're not that type of company that's going to come in and go out, so I think we have, we have a responsibility.
It's an approval pitch.
Well, to be clear, so Outfront does this as a public service, correct?
That is correct.
And can you explain a little bit more about the intention behind that?
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, it's something we offer to our municipal partners, this isn't, you know, some, some towns use it, some towns don't. I mean, honestly, it's not something that everyone either sees the benefit in or wants to utilize. Some towns put us to the test, and good for them, because that's what we want, we want it to be utilized by the townships. You know, we want them to have the benefit of this modern technology because it's not something that was available to them in the past. So the more communication you can have with your residents, the better, in my opinion.
And I just, we'll, we'll get to the protocols in two seconds, I just want to be clear for Mr. Johnson, from a legal perspective, of course, this is not, you know, intended for leverage at all, of course, that is not appropriate or illegal. So I want to be clear that Outfront does this, no matter whether a town wants it or not, it is a public service Outfront's offering, it's not intended to entice approval because we cannot do that, and we are not.
Understood.
Okay, so I'm handing you something they're all going to expect, because we talked a lot about it already, but this is A4A, and what is that?
So Exhibit A4A, which is being handed out, is titled Protocol A. Protocol A is our protocol involving emergent messaging. So this is messaging that is for the township in a case of some type of emergency as seen by the local PD or the OEM, you know, this isn't something that's like, you know, a traffic issuer, a backup on 80 or something like that, this is like, you know, hurricane evacuation routes, this is something of a critical nature that has to be addressed immediately. Protocol A, in its essence, because there's a lot of words on the page, we establish a town designee along with a backup, and we assign them a unique verification code. When the use is needed, the town's designee reaches out to our digital operations 24-hour hotline, and they specifically use that code to identify themselves. So they say, you know, where they're from, they use the code, and they can then request a specific message be shown on the displays that are in town. The team that we have on the other end will create that message. All that's being made is a phone call, there's nothing they have to do, they don't have to sit in front of a computer for 20 minutes to come up with something, they tell them, here's what needs to be on the sign, put it on the sign, the team creates it and displays it on the sign. Now, that emergency message will override any and all advertising on the sign, including the town's own time. It, it becomes the only message on the sign, it stops rotating, there's no other ads going, and it is there for at least one hour. Depending on the level of the emergency and the nature of it, we would work with the town to understand how long it needs to remain there. It may not be something that needs to stay the whole time, it could move into rotation with other things, but obviously, if this is a severe emergency, we're going to work with the town to make sure that it is displayed for the amount of time the town needs. So that, that is Protocol A.
Okay, and so now I'm handing you...
I'm sorry, did, did that answer your question? Because we kind of cut you off before I said...
Yeah, I apologize, I just thought it would be better to look at it. I'm handing you what I premarked as A4B, and we're going to hand this out as well. What is this?
I, I do have a question, I don't know...
Yes, sir.
How do you, how do you coordinate if it's like a county-wide or statewide emergency with all the municipalities?
Unfortunately, unfortunately, there is no apparatus for, for a coordination on that level. So this is, this is really localized to Parsippany Troy Hills.
So you don't have a relationship with the state police or the state, like all personnel emergency management?
Sorry.
Well, states put a lot of signs up wanting to...
The state does use their own messaging signs for, for things of their nature, but there's, there's nothing concrete in place that would provide it for the state or on a larger level beyond the municipality itself.
But you have these agreements with everyone, with every town you have a sign in, right?
With multiple townships, yes.
But there's no way of coordinating all these signs to work together?
There, there's no way to coordinate, we don't have an apparatus to coordinate for the towns to work together. If we were approached by the state OEM, and they said, whatever you've got on 46 from, from Totowa all the way out to Hackettstown, if you've got the ability to put up a message about local flooding, stay off the roads, or something like that, we would absolutely help them, but there's no apparatus in place that allows them to do that in an automated way, they would have to call us, they would have to reach out to us.
But of course, the state knows how to contact Outfront.
Yeah, this, they know how to contact us, absolutely. Yes, they do.
Okay, is, before we move on to Protocol B, is there any more questions from the Board on A? Or are there any more questions? That was terrible grammar. Okay, so A4B, what is this?
So A4B is Protocol B, which follows a bit of Protocol A in that the town assigns a designee. This is typically somebody either in the administration or the rec. department, it really depends on the township, on who they have, they have a communications professional or what have you, but somebody who can coordinate different messaging, non-emergent messaging that the town may want to use, be it a townwide garage sale, or some type of registration, or something happening at the library, or whatever that would be. The township reaches out to Outfront approximately two weeks before they would want a message displayed. The reason we ask for that much notice is that if we need to help design the ad, we are more than welcome, more than happy to, however, we need a little bit of time to do that. We can't always do it within, you know, 24 or 48 hours, might need a little lead time on that. And again, that's, that's a service that we provide to our municipal partners, where they have access to our creative department for reasonable design services at $0.
So I don't mean to interrupt.
Yes, sir.
Maybe it's because I've heard this in other presentations. I am not sure how this helps me decide whether or not you get your approval. I, for me, and I could be totally wrong, maybe I'm overstepping, but the fact that you're doing it, that's the testimony I need. I could be wrong, I don't want to speak for anybody else, but to go through the steps of who you have to call, when you have to call, I'm not sure it's pertinent.
That's a good point.
I, I understand, we, this is, you know, we're aware that Parsipony is pretty aware of how this works, most towns are, are not, to be honest with you, and so, you know, we don't want to assume anything you might want to hear. If, if you want us to move on, we are happy to move on.
Is there anyone who wants to go through this, or can we move on?
At the, I was just pointing out, at the bottom of the page, you'll see in writing what I mentioned before, where the town has 12 and a half percent.
I just have one question about this practice in general, you had mentioned some towns do not take advantage, they choose not to do this.
Yes.
What reasons might there be to not do this?
I honestly don't know. So, so I live in Montville, there are three digital billboards in my town, and it took two and a half years for the township to put a message on the time that they have given. I don't know why, I know the administrator, I knew the administrator when, like, it, it just was something that they didn't see as a tool they could use, I think there was something that maybe triggered them to want to do it.
I was just wondering if there's something the Board should consider for whether we put this in or not.
I just have one follow-up, for purposes of a potential resolution, is the protocol a replacement to an actual agreement with the town, or does it, is it consistent with an agreement? In other words, do you have written agreements with towns, or you just operate under the protocol?
I, I believe the way that we've done this in the past is the protocol is an exhibit that's taken in as part of the application, and should there be an approval, then that protocol has to be adhered to. If the town would prefer a separate written agreement, we're more than happy to do that as well, but the way we've done it with other towns is the protocol has been accepted during the application process and it's part of the approval.
So the approval, in those situations, the approval, the, the approval is subject to you acting within the protocol?
Correct. If we, if we didn't have, if we came back and said, no, you don't get 12 and a half percent, we're in violation of our approval.
Understood.
And, you know, Mr. Johnson, of course, we would, we would be happy to have you specifically in a theoretical approval situation, call that out if you want to make that a condition and say, we have to abide by the protocols that we submitted as A3A and A4B.
We're working through this issue with respect to other billboard applications in terms of agreements, et cetera, so that's why I asked the question.
Of course, yeah.
Understood.
You know, the, the thing is, because most towns are not used to this, we don't get, these are actually very good questions that we don't normally get, so I appreciate it just for that aspect, because you're right, it's a totally reasonable question. Okay, so do you have any other comments to wrap up for the Board?
No, the only other thing I would say is our, our office is in Fairfield, we're right down the road, we're easily accessible to the township at any time, you know, we're excited about this technology, our, our clients enjoy the opportunity to be timely and relevant with their messaging, and happy to answer any other questions if you have any. Thank you.
That's all for me.
Yeah, just one quick question, and maybe this isn't for him, but I'm looking at that exhibit displayed there, and there's that dotted line around, the curved dotted line that surrounds everything, what is that?
That is the 200-foot notice area?
That's the 200 feet, okay, thank you.
Got to use my laser pointer, so.
My headquarters in Fairfield.
My office, yes.
Is that where all the programming takes place for all the different billboards?
No, there's, there's two levels of programming, there's the local scheduling, and then the physical programming is handled out of a network operations center in Spokane, Washington.
So you're a national firm?
We are a national firm, yes.
Are you an international firm?
We are currently international, we will not be international when we divest our Canadian business in the next coming six months or so.
Your total inventory, you said, was 3,500?
There are 3,500 displays under my management here in the state of New Jersey, 99 of which are digital. We, we operate over 300,000 displays throughout, throughout the country, including like the MTA subway system, buses, all that stuff, that's all us.
Amazing company.
Are we suggesting a celebration with Parsipony for number 100?
Shit.
Can't do that.
Of course, that was a joke, that was not intended to be.
The person who's going to answer the questions on reducing the size and the height of the billboard is your engineer.
Engineer and planner certainly can, can address any questions you have with respect to that, yes, I think those would be the appropriate answers, Mr. Chadwick.
Were you present when they decided to reduce the size and height?
Yes, I was.
Okay. The height went from 90 feet to 60?
That is correct.
Looking at your, I don't know, Exhibit A1A?
A2, the simulations?
Yes.
Yes.
You've got a real good view coming eastbound.
Yes.
There doesn't appear to be any tree cutting necessary there.
Correct.
The other way is up in the air.
That is correct. Even, even at the...
If, if you lose with DEP, I don't think DOT's going to be an issue, but I think DEP would be substantial. Did you hear me?
If you lose with DEP.
Okay. If, if DEP is cooperative, let's put it that way.
Yes.
Is there any reason for it to be 60 feet high?
When you're traveling from, from a sales, from a sales point, not, not an engineer or planner, there are a number of very tall vehicles coming across your view, your view shed, right? You've got, what?
Towing trucks.
Four lanes, two lanes plus shoulders, so those 14, 15-foot tall tractor trailers are, are...
They'd be 15 feet.
Again, I'm not a professional tractor trailer driver either, not, you know, those can play into the visibility of the sign the lower you go. At the 60 feet, we're confident in being able to clear all of those potential obstructions and have a sign that is clearly visible and sellable for our advertisers. So I, I believe that 60 foot is appropriate height in this situation, considering everything that we've done with the simulations.
And that's, of course, from an advertising perspective, you can't speak to engineering or planning.
No, just from a visibility standpoint, if I was selling it to an advertiser, 60 feet is a good thing for this, for us.
Just on the exhibits, too, that, to my view, from the local lanes westbound, the sign has good visibility without any tree removal, from my, from this one picture I'm looking at, okay?
Local lanes?
Local lanes westbound.
Yeah, but, I mean, the express, so the local lanes here, I can see, you can't see anything, right?
That's, okay, so you're actually referring to the express line?
I said express line, okay? That's where most of the traffic is in, but that, the express line, they, they look like...
That's what the trees cut. Go back one page.
Yeah, that's, that's the intention, if we cut the trees.
Go back one page.
Yeah, okay, so this, this is what trees cut?
Yes, if you, if you... Yeah, if you go toward the front one more page, that'll show you the current existing conditions.
Okay. All right, thank you. That's what I missed. Any other question? I assume he's finished.
He is, yes.
Any other questions?
I think I have a couple. And, and looking at A2, both eastbound and westbound, they're both the same distance sites on the sign?
They're 750 feet from the sign, yes.
Oh, okay, just seems like the eastbound would be so much further away, just because it's, you know, way over on the other side of the highway. I guess it's because it's the angle, I guess?
I, I think it's an angular thing, yes, yeah, but, you know, if you want to talk more about that, I'm sure the engineer can address it.
And then the other quick question I had, Outfront, do you have any others, do you have any other signs in Parsipony?
We do. Yes.
Which one is yours? Because we have several. Actually, I think, have you other digital signs in Parsipony?
No, we do not have any other digital signs in Parsipony. We, we do have some traditional static billboards in Parsipony, yes.
And what would you say is the closest digital sign to Parsipony?
Along, so the closest digital sign to Parsipony is going to be, I believe, Denville, on, on Route 46 in downtown, right behind the...
And how's the size of that sign compared to what you're proposing?
It is the same size as what is before you today. I believe from the roadway, it's 45, from the base, it's 55, because it's a sunk-down parking lot, but again, it's only visible to Route 46.
Are you talking only your signs?
I'm, yes, that was the question, was the closest digital sign that I operate?
You are?
Yes.
I didn't, I probably just asked in general.
No, well, you would know it, I don't think you would know in general.
Depends.
Well, it's, it's permitted, tied to all the others.
All right, but the one in, the one in Denville is same size, but not as high?
Correct, and not on the same roadway.
The nature of the roadway, okay.
Correct, it's, I believe that stretch of 46 is a two-lane each-way roadway, approximately 45 miles an hour, maybe 50?
Yes.
Just to clarify one brief point you made, Mr. Chadwick, regarding the DOT permit, if there were another digital sign permitted, built or not, 4,500 feet away, DOT wouldn't tell us, they just would only tell us if there was one within 3,000 feet.
Right. Don't they have a, just a chart of where they are?
Sorry?
They have, they have a permit run.
Yeah, they have a permit, you can look it up.
Yeah, you could go through that and look it up.
Yeah, absolutely, it's available, sure, I just, Mr. Antal doesn't have it on top of his head, but it is available.
Any other questions?
No, I'm good.
Okay, any questions from the public of this witness?
Actually, no, I do have, you know, I just noticed something else. I, I'm, I'm looking through the list of signs that are on A1.
On A1, okay.
And there's, there's, I noticed one on the sign on Route 80.
That's not the full list, to be clear.
So, again, the, the list provided is just a page from the total list, and whether or not, I mean, the one that's listed on Route 80 is in Totowa.
Okay, then
And that's, and that's a permit in total, I'm not, I don't even know if that's
How many signs do you have on Route 80?
What difference does it make?
I want to know what the height and size are.
Oh, okay.
Of the signs compared to the
Are, are you saying along the entire stretch of Route 80, or are you asking for a specific township?
No, just in New Jersey.
Just in the state of New Jersey?
Put you to the test.
I, I believe, I believe we have a total of 15 structures in the state of New Jersey on I-80. One, two, three, four, five, six of which are digital
Okay.
On 80. The rest would be static. So six, so approximately 15 structures, 30 displays, six of which would be digital, I believe. And the average, the average height?
The six digital ones, I guess, are all, are they all different heights?
They are, it depends, it depends on the location, it depends on, you know, the topography of the roadway, it depends on the, the distance for visibility, this is a very wide stretch of 80. If you go further to the west, we have a back-to-back digital in Rockaway, which I believe is 70 feet to the top, and if you go from ground level, it's closer to like 90 or 100, because it's, the property is sunk down. So really, the, the heights of the signs do vary. If you go to the east from this location, you go to Wayne, you'll see signs that are closer to 75, 80 feet tall as you get toward Route 23.
All right, thank you.
All right, there were no questions from the public, so
Yes.
We are finished, I believe.
Thank you.
Okay, so, I'd like to call next, Tiago Duarte.
Just where we'll affirm that the testimony that you are about to give, shall we the truth, the whole truth, and up above the truth?
I do.
Please state your names, spell your last name.
Tiago Duarte.
Okay, so, Mr. Duarte, we first need to get you qualified as an expert witness. Can you, for that purpose, provide the board with the benefit of your professional background and experience?
Yes, I graduated Rutgers University, Rutgers University with a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering in 2011. I've been practicing in the field of land development, civil engineering since then, so just over 12 years of experience. In those 12 years, I've worked on residential, industrial, commercial projects, and approximately 50 billboard projects similar to what's before the board tonight. My license is current in the state of New Jersey, and I have testified before numerous boards in the past, including this board once previously.
And you obviously testified before other boards, you said?
Yes.
About, can you ballpark on any times?
I'm not at 100, but I think I'm 75-plus.
Okay, and you were accepted, of course, as an expert engineer by those boards?
Yes.
Were you accepted as an expert engineer by this board?
Yes.
Okay, so I'd like to present Mr. Duarte as an expert engineer.
He's qualified.
Thank you. All right, so let's get into the meat of this, Tiago. What did you, well, did Outfront hire you to, to work on this application?
Yes, correct, so my firm, Dynamic Engineering, we prepared the survey, the site plan, worked with Matt's office for the application, and also assisted in developing the exhibits that were provided to the board tonight.
And did you review the board planner's letter from Mr. Chadwick, as well as the board engineer's letter?
Yes, I have.
Okay, great. So let's, let's go back to the aerial for a sec, which is, was marked, not marked, actually, I apologize, but it's up there behind you. Can you, just again, for the board, ID the location of the property, as well as where the board will be on the property?
Sure, so again, the property address is 959 U.S. Route 46, the block is 722, and the lot is Lot 2. Site is outlined in white at the center of the sheet. The site itself is approximately 7.8 acres, fully developed, or, the majority of the site's fully developed, with a existing office building, and off-street parking area for that office building. The site's located in the B1 zone, and the billboard that we're proposing is also shown on that aerial, it's located on the south end of the property nearest to the right-of-way of Interstate I-80. The site, again, is unique, because it's sandwiched between two, two highways, basically, so 46 is on the north side, and Interstate 80 is on, on the south side.
Okay, great. Now, you said you prepared a site plan, correct?
Yes.
You have that with you today?
Yes.
That is part of the package, I think, I would just ask the board to make sure that everyone has the one with their revision date of 3/28, so we're all looking at the same thing. If you look at revision number two, it should say 3/28. On the first page, on the bottom, or on the, on the top right?
Top right corner.
Top right corner, that's right.
Got it, ready? So, with this page, of the site plan that depicts, is, it zooms in on the corner of the site where the billboard is proposed. Again, it is a very large overall parcel, so we just focus in on the rear corner where the sign is proposed. The billboard is depicted south of the existing curb line, so there's a parking area at the rear of the site. We are proposing to install the column for the billboard approximately 9 feet from that curb line. It's a flag structure, what that means is, the pole is at the far end, either end of the structure, typically be in the center, but we also can move pole wherever we need it for certain conditions. And what that allows us to do is drop the foundation close to the existing disturbed area in the parking lot, and overhang the open space undeveloped area that is south of the curb line, and also get the sign closer to the Route 80 right-of-way, which is our intended target audience for the billboard.
All right, so, let's skip over page two, that's the aerial, we've talked about them enough, and move on to page three, excuse me, and let's talk a little bit about the actual sign, how it was designed, and how it will operate. So, can you please walk the board through on page three of the site plan, the, the sign detail?
Sure, so as I mentioned, it's a, a flag structure, the sign, the whole column will be at the, of the picture, it's, it's on the right side of the sign, so it's an overhang into the open space area. The post sign is 13 feet, 7 and 3/4 inches by 47 feet and 3 inches. That is, as you heard earlier, just typically referred to as the 14 by 48 industry sign, dimensionally, it's a little smaller.
Why the, why the difference?
For the LED sign faces, they tend to be a little smaller to the left of the cabinet, and also there's certain proportional elements that have to be maintained for the sign face.
Okay, and what is the square footage of each sign face?
So each sign face will be 644.8 square feet.
Great, and the, the support pole, how, how does that behave?
So that'll be a steel column, and then there'd be a foundation where it getting, it's anchored in the ground. The column is not designed yet, that'd be accounted for in final building plans, but that would be submitted to the building department. Typically, for this size and height, it, it could be anywhere from, you know, 4-foot diameter pole to, to 6 feet, it's not usually much larger than that.
Okay, and you mentioned the, there would be a slight flag. What, what does that mean, and what, what is the spread of the paste apart from each other?
So, the flag simply means, instead of being a center mount structure, the column that supports the sign face is at, you know, one of the extreme ends, in this case, the back of the sign, where the sign faces are furthest apart. It's called the V-structure, the structure is 20 feet wide, so 20 feet between sign faces at the rear, and narrowed down at the front of the sign. And the purpose of doing that is to pitch the, the sign slightly, skew it from directly perpendicular to the road, and that really helps to directionalize it better to the traffic east and westbound, versus a perpendicular sign, which would not be as, as directionalized to, to the roadway.
Okay, so, A2 simulations, I assume you heard Mr. Anthon's testimony regarding that?
Sure, yes.
Those, the pictures in the simulations, who took those?
I took those.
Okay, and, so you also measured the distances that are depicted on each of these pictures?
I did, yes. And just to give the board some more reference on, on how that all works, as you heard, we bring a crane to, well, Outfront brings a crane to the site, we locate it in the correct location on-site, so where the sign face will be located, measure off the existing features, in this case, there's a lot of features, the curb lines and everything that we can measure off of, to, to get it oriented in the right spot. Then the crane is raised, it raises a panel of a known dimension, and then we ride the roadways to, to take the pictures at the set distances. The reason we raise the, a panel of a known dimension is that we can then have the creative arts team scale the proposed sign accurately, to generate, you know, a, a very accurate depiction of what the sign's going to look like from these various distances along the road.
And your team reviewed this and was able to confirm that the, the graphic artist did it correctly?
Yes, correct.
Okay. So, you, you already mentioned that you reviewed the April 9 report from Mr. Lemanovich, correct?
Correct.
In that report, he makes a mention of the access to the site. Are you aware of the, the frontage on Route 80?
Yes, I am.
Can, in your experience, Outfront or the property owner have access from Route 80?
No, not from Route 80.
And, and why is that?
As a major interstate, there's a lot of requirements and regulations where you can and can't have interchanges and access points. In this case, you cannot have a driveway to a property off of, off of 80.
Okay, and does the property have access to another roadway?
It does.
Which roadway is that?
So on the north side of the property, on the Route 46 side, there is access to Route 46, there's a existing driveway there, and we understand it connects to, the property connects to, to 46.
But the property does not front on Route 46, correct?
It does not, correct.
Okay, and so, how does that work?
So, we, we understand from the review in the DOT parcel max, there's an additional lot between the property and the right-of-way, and that property, as we understand it, is owned by the DOT, including, well, it, it is owned by the DOT.
And so the access to the property from 46 crosses over that DOT?
Crosses over DOT property to 46, which is DOT right-of-way.
Okay. Are we changing that access from 46 by our proposed use?
No, no change to, to access to the site.
Okay, and you're aware that the engineering report mentioned the possibility of a variance requirement regarding the lack of access from Route 80?
Yes.
Okay, so if, sorry, give me one second, where am I putting my notebook? So, I'm just going to read you something quickly from the MLUL, so we can clarify this for everybody. So I'm reading you the statute in the MLUL, section 36, 45 colon D, 45, sorry, 40, colon 55D dash 36. "The Board of Adjustment may upon application or appeal vary the application of section 35, and direct the issuance of a permit subject to conditions that will provide adequate access for firefighting safety, and that will protect any future street layout shown on the official map or on a general circulation plan element of the municipal master plan." Do you believe that the existing access complies with that requirement, as, as you heard it?
Yes, I do.
And does Outfront's application affect that access at all?
No, in no way.
So you don't think there will be any issues regarding changing access for firefighting, safety, other health and safety issues, emergency vehicles, et cetera?
No, no issues.
Okay, thank you. What are the, what are the setbacks of the proposed sign?
So setbacks to Route, to Interstate 80, it's 31 feet, and that's the leading edge of the sign to, to the property line, to the nearest side yard, it's 108, 109.8 feet, and then 531.9 feet to the Route 46 right-of-way.
Okay. Mr., you've heard Mr. Anthon talk a little bit briefly about the DOT requirements of the sign, and he said, the sign will not move, rotate, use flashing lights, or appear to be animated. The way you've designed it, is that the intention, as you understand it?
That is the intention, correct.
That it will comply with that requirement?
Comply with the DOT requirements.
Yeah, I apologize, I asked that, in an odd way, I set you up to, to be confused. Okay, so, let's get into the lighting a little bit. How does the lighting of this sign work?
So, as, I'm sure the board is familiar, as an LED sign, unlike a traditional static sign, there's no vinyl copy, there's no paper, there's no anything, the, the messages that are displayed on the billboard are from a screen, which is created by various LED modules, affixed to the steel structure, which is the billboard structure. The, the LED modules, they contain various hundreds, thousands of red, green, and blue diodes, LED diodes, they illuminate and, in various combinations, create any color necessary to achieve whatever image is being displayed. Very similar, in a way, to cell phones, TV screens, computer screens, that it's, you know, there's no limit to, to what can be displayed. The light levels for the LED, they are, I, I'd say that there's limited impact to any of the surrounding areas, and the reason for that is it's a constant, constantly monitored light level. So, on a cloudy day, there's ambient light meter on the structure that adjusts the, the light levels or brightness of the screen. On a sunny day, you need the screen to be at its maximum power, so that you can overcome the daytime condition of ambient light to see the message. At nighttime, you don't need that full power setting, so it automatically dims down to a industry standard level that is acceptable, won't be too bright, there won't be any glare associated with it. And again, it's a constantly monitored, so on an overcast day, you also don't need that same power level, so it throttles the, the power down, and there's fail safes as far as the, as far as the ambient light levels and the time of day, so it's, it's not going to be tricked if, for whatever reason, the, the light meter gets blocked, or there's any sort of fail safe in that regard.
So if somebody were to, I don't know how they do this, but like, let's pretend someone can fly, and they, and they show, they've shown a light right on the sensor, it would be aware, you're saying that it's not the appropriate time of day for that amount of light?
Correct, so, yeah, at night, say it's, it's reading it's daytime, but it's actually nighttime, the sign would adjust, knowing that it's, you know, call it midnight, we're not going to go full power right now. There's, there's fail safes built into the system to, to prevent that.
Okay, now let's move on to, I think, the, the question of the night. You heard all the testimony from Mr. Anthon about possible tree cut, tree cutting?
Sure.
And what is the intention there?
So, quickly, before we even touch on that, on the site plan, around the area, well, adjacent to the area where the, the sign column is being proposed, you'll note there's lines there that are depicting limits of a, a ditch, a drainage ditch that was flagged by a wetlands consultant, they went out and flagged it with the intention of identifying if it is a wetlands area, if it is regulated by the DEP, and then we have submitted a plan to the DEP for a letter of interpretation to verify or to, to confirm if that is in fact a wetlands area, and what the associated buffers would be with that. So the area's flagged as WA, so everything shown on the sheet is in fact confirmed by the DEP to, DEP to be a drainage ditch, and a drainage ditch in DEP's regulations does not have a buffer. It's an ordinary resource value, water body, water course, so there is no buffer. So the, the sign footer that is proposed to be between the, that, that line, the wetlands line, which in this case is a drainage ditch line, and the curb is not a regulated buffer area.
So you don't need a DEP permit to build the base of the sign?
Correct, we do not.
Do you have the LOI in hand?
We could provide correspondence on that, we ended up
Who did I talk to that was in charge, it wasn't with you, right? Not a player. The, the environmentalists who did the wetlands?
The, the firm who did the, the flagging for her?
Yeah.
Uh, it was the boys.
Right. And she wasn't sure whether or not you had your LOI?
Yeah, we do, we do not have an LOI.
You don't have it yet, but you have a classification?
We have written correspondence from the DEP confirming that this is a drainage ditch.
She gave you that, okay.
And we can, of course, provide that if the board wants to.
Yes.
And the whole idea of cutting trees down, in that
So
Open state, well, what do they call it, ditch? Swell, I guess they call it.
Swell, correct, yeah.
You don't know.
So it's not a regulated? I can say that to the east of the site, so that's where we're focused with the drainage ditch. So, as, as you heard, the, the east, westbound facing east sign, which is the one on, on the east side, so that's facing the westbound traffic, that's the one base that is blocked by the existing trees. That area of the site That area of the site, there is pockets of wetlands in this area, so yes, any tree cutting, tree clearing would be subject not only to the DOT's review, but also to DEP's review. And that basically is where this, call it, projection of the lot line, so basically, if you were to just draw a line there from the north-south line, connect that to the right-of-way, anything on the west side of that is the drainage ditch, which is not a regulated buffer area or wetlands area in the DEP's eyes, but everything to the east of that is flagged as wetlands, it does have buffers, and the DEP is protective of those areas.
Right, and you don't know at this point the outcome?
Right, what they would allow or not allow. In my experience, the DEP has allowed tree topping, cutting the trees for specified heights in wetlands areas and wetlands transition areas, because the topping of those trees doesn't affect the overall health of the tree, the tree will continue to grow, and then you'll just have to, you know, every so often, you'll have to go back out and cut it again.
So, just, I haven't asked this question before, but why that location for the sign versus moving it farther west on the property?
As you just heard, the DOT's requirements and the spacing between permits kind of sets the sign where it has to be to pull that permit from the DOT.
Because there's a...
So, if I move it so...
Another digital off the street.
I believe there are unbuilt permits right on the border on each side, so it has to be in that spot to be valid under the DOT requirements. And, thank you, yes, and there's also an omen nearby, yeah.
A what?
There is an omen nearby, which the permit has to be, you know, 500 feet away from the roadway widening.
Are you also the person to testify that there will be no, no light bothering any residential properties?
Yes, yes, I am.
Are you going to say that?
Based on the sign location, what's being proposed, 14 by 48 industry sign, yes, there will be no impacts of lighting on residential properties.
So, is that the only residential that's shown on the top of that? Is that residential right there?
To the north of the property?
Yeah, to the north?
Yes, that is.
And they will not be affected at all?
Correct, they will not be. The rear of the sign faces to the north, so anybody looking at the sign from the north will just see the back of the sign, and due to the LED, again, it's a very directional technology, so it cuts off, there's no coverage that could go behind the sign.
To me, that's the real question.
That's on Beverwick, so, the bottom left corner, there's an R2 zone, it looks like there's a house there?
Yes, there is.
They're not going to be able to see that sign?
They won't have any impacts due to the lighting.
Will they be able to see the sign?
I think that's a question for the planner, he...
Okay.
Yeah. So, regarding the tree cutting, of course, aside from all the DEP stuff, how from looks off to work on the VCM with DOT?
Yes, correct, and to clarify, beyond the property limits, Outfront would not be allowed to cut trees on anyone else's property, so it'd either be approval from DEP, just in general, for anything in the wetlands area or buffer area, approval from the DOT to do any trimming or removals within the DOT's right-of-way, and then again, only within the property limits would they be able to remove any trees. Subject to everyone else's approval.
And that's what you're depicting on your clearing picture, with only trees removed on your property?
Yes, correct. And the intent of any tree removal or tree clearing is not to just clear cut, it's really just to open up enough envelope so that the sign is visible versus what you see in the other simulations, which is totally blocked by the trees.
I just want to make sure before I move on, everyone has asked their questions about that topic, of course, come back and get more, but, okay, so are there, are there any site plan concerns regarding this application?
No, no concerns, again, there's no changes to the site access, no changes to the parking configuration, we're not removing any parking spaces, we're not really proposing any changes onsite at all, other than dropping the column in that grass area and then bringing power to it to illuminate the sign.
Does it require, I mean, you heard this from Mr. Antal, but just reiterate, does it require a lot of site visits?
No, in our experience, again, you heard the testimony quarterly, visits just for regular maintenance, very much less traffic anticipated compared to a typical static sign that you have to have someone out there physically changing the message.
Any drainage issues?
No, no drainage issues.
Stormwater?
No, no impacts.
Impervious coverage?
There'll be a small increase, it's really just the base of the sign, so, less than 25 foot, square foot difference really is anticipated.
What about sewer concerns?
No, no impacts or changes to the sewer demand on the site.
And any other traditional site plan concerns that you could think of?
No, I think I hit them all.
Okay, any other comments you have for the board?
No, happy to answer any other questions.
Okay, no further questions from me.
Any other questions from the board?
Question, you heard the board was concerned about the removal of trees, we also have some, the plans show these wetland lines where the sign is supposed to be and all that, do you have a survey to support any of this information?
We can, we can provide that to you.
Okay, well, that's required by state statute, you're not supposed to submit a site plan application without the signed and sealed survey.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure...
I believe the survey was submitted with our...
We don't have it.
I apologize, but if either that was an oversight, or I don't know what happened, but I am very sorry.
Okay, does it show the trees that the board has been asking about?
It shows trees, yes, and it shows all the wetlands limits that we flagged.
We will definitely make sure, if there was an oversight on our part, I apologize, and we'll make sure you have that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Questions from the public for this witness? All right, you can bring your next witness.
Okay, Mr. Williams.
Okay. Do you swear that the testimony that you're about to give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing above the truth?
I most certainly do.
State your names, by your last name.
Good evening, Commissioners, my name is George W. Williams, Williams with an S, W-I-L-L-I-A-N-S, Principal of Planning and Consulting at Montclair, located at 105 Crow Street, Suite Number 3 and 4.
Let us see, you can be seated.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Williams, I think you know the spiel, let's get you qualified as an expert, so can you please provide for the board for that purpose the benefit of your professional background and experience?
Certainly, again, good evening, Commissioners, my licensed by State Board of Professional Planners in New Jersey, nationally certified by the American Institute of Certified Planners. I completed my graduate studies in city and regional planning at Rutgers Graduate School, now known as the Blauvstein School, just to date myself a little bit. My primary practice is land use, community and economic development, but my firm and I also prepare master plans, zoning ordinances, a lot of redevelopment plans, and civic engagement. I have been practicing for a little over 30 years now with a primary focus in those areas, and I've appeared before numerous land use wards throughout the state of New Jersey, but this will be my first time before this august board. I have appeared as an expert witness on behalf of outdoor advertising signs for OFM on many occasions, and last but not least, I have served as a board planner currently in Hoboken and Bloomfield and West Orange, my firm, and other municipalities, and I have volunteered on my hometown zoning board with Justin Montclair.
Oh, that means Outfront Media, correct?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, I have no further questions, I'd like to submit, Mr. Williams does an expert in planning.
He's qualified.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Williams, did Outfront hire you to work on this application?
Yes, they did.
And what did they hire you for?
To serve as an expert planner in support of the application before this board this evening.
Okay, and what did you review, and what work did you do in connection with that work?
Certainly, we approached this application the way we approach just about every land use application, because no matter the land use, the process is a saying, we begin with a review of the local land use documents, in this case, your master plan, the land development ordinance, all that in the context of the municipal land use law. We reviewed the site plan and site plan application before you this evening, and I and my team have visited the site on several occasions, most of those occasions with the entire Outfront Media team for site visits and crane tests. Additionally, I did review the case law and planning literature in support of this application, and of course, I had an opportunity to review your board professionals' reports. Mr. Chadwick, as mentioned earlier, has submitted several versions of his report, the most recent, I believe dated April 16th of this year. There was also a water review memo dated February 15th of last year, and we received your board engineers' application, the review dated the 9th, and we got that today.
Great, okay, so, please walk the board through your planning overview for the subject land use application.
Certainly, I'll preface my planning analysis by just giving a very brief introduction. You've already heard a fair amount of testimony from Mr. Antal, our civil engineer, I'll try not to be redundant, but just for the record, this is an application for an outdoor advertising sign and a D1 use variances required for that use, because it's not expressly permitted in this zone district.
And we need a one for a second municipal use as well?
That is correct. The property is commonly referred to as 959 Route 46, and identified in your municipal tax records as Block 722, Lot Number 2. Again, it's in the Township's Highway Commercial District or B1 Zone District. It's a relatively large and irregularly shaped lot, as you heard from our civil engineer. There is a development on the site in the form of an office building, a multi-story office building that is tenanted and has an expansive parking lot. We will be citing the home if approved in the location mentioned by our civil engineer. As mentioned, the height is proposed at 60 feet, and the, we think, or submitted to the board, that's an appropriate height for this sign at this location.
And what is the size of the proposed sign, just to reiterate?
As mentioned earlier, 14 by 48, with the actual size being more like 13.7, and 47 by 3 inches.
Thank you, okay, what are the general, let's say, general planning issues involved in this application?
Beginning with the advent or benefits of a LED, LED-formatted outdoor advertising as opposed to static, I won't repeat everything because Mr. Antal went through those benefits. Generally speaking, fewer trips to the site for maintenance as opposed to the more traditional static board, but from a planning perspective, and I know you hear this from your experience with applications, there is a benefit of the ability to offer multi-messengers for the clients, but also the public benefit of PSAs, Mr. Antal went through the protocols for that. I would also add from a planning perspective that it has been supported by the literature that this format makes for a more controlled lighting for the sign, and also makes the sign typically more legible, conspicuous, and readable. In terms of the impact generally on a community from a planning perspective, and I will go through the crane test results within a moment, I would submit that the sign is very appropriate for the site, will have no negative impact on the surrounding community, but is appropriately cited to effectuate the purpose of the sign, which is to convey information about commerce to the motoring population.
Okay, now, my understanding is that you prepared an exhibit, which, if you don't mind having one that I can mark, will be A5, and if we could just hand those out. While the board is, I mean, hold the board, while Paul is handing these out, can you please explain to the board what they're going to be looking at?
Certainly, Commissioners, this is a low-tech exhibit, it is basically a capture of images from your land use documents with some overlays from my team, and the remainder of the images are photos that were captured by my team and myself during the most recent crane test.
Okay, and how many pages is it?
12.
Why don't we run through it for the boards today and the same they're looking at?
Certainly. The first several images are just foundational, they just kind of establish where the sign is located in the context of precipitation. So, Slide number 2, Exhibit 1 is an aerial map of 959 Route 46. It is identifying our site both with a label marked site, and it is highlighted in the yellow highlighting color. Again, you can see the site is very irregularly shaped lot with the largest or widest portion along Route 80 and the narrowest portion close to Route 46. Slide 3 is a similar aerial, this time our site is indicated with the bold black border, just indicating that we are in the B1 Zone District as captured in your board professional memos. Slide number 4, and it is perhaps the best place for me to pause for a second and take the description of the crane test methodology a bit further. So, you heard testimony from both of our prior witnesses that Outfront Media traditionally conducts a crane test for a variety of reasons. Mr. Antal spoke about the benefit of a crane test to create the simulations that are before you so that it is possible to speak to the clients about how this would work for their promotion of services. From a planning perspective, a bit different from Mr. Duarte's perspective, we use it, and we appreciate Outfront Media's tradition, to identify areas that may be considered sensitive and to answer, I believe, one of the Commissioners' questions about will the sign impact perhaps residential areas. So, on Slide 4, with that being said, and you heard the methodology, crane lists a pre-conceived panel that can be seen from a distance, and that panel is used to do the simulations.
And you were there on the day of the crane test?
I was.
Okay, thanks.
Slide 4 identifies with the yellow bullets a number of locations that we visited based on a couple of reasons. First and foremost, before we began our site visit, we identify areas that are zoned for residential or obviously have residential structures. We also receive input about other areas that would be advisable for us to visit, and so we visited each of those sites. The site engineer, in addition to visiting these sites with my team, actually drives the highway as well and takes videos.
Site engineer, you mean Mr. Duarte?
I do, yes, Mr. Duarte.
And all the photos that you're about to show the board, did you take these pictures yourself?
I did, I and/or my team member.
Great, but the people who work for you were using?
Correct.
Okay, so why don't we start with this next, the picture on the next page?
All right, so Slide 4, again, the yellow dots are the specific areas we targeted, but we drove a much larger area, and the proposed sign is labeled on that slide. Slide number 5 just shows what that panel, or a portion of that panel that is suspended from the crane, looks like, and then a picture from that panel using drone imagery looking back towards Route 46. We begin, and again, those yellow bullets correspond with the images I'm about to show you now. Slide number 6 is taken from 7 Gordon Circle, and we walked between these units to get a clear view of where the sign is located, and that red box is just to draw your attention to where the billboard or that sign is actually located. This site is, let me just read this carefully, 900 feet away from the proposed sign, which would tell you a little bit about why it's so hard to see. Slide number 7, and this is the...
Sorry, sorry, with 6, what's the angle of, you know, the V here?
So, the V, from here or from each of these locations, you'll be looking at the back of the V to the extent you can see it, you would only see the back of the V, which Mr. Duarte testified, is not illuminated, I believe it's black, so, no impact from light.
That's like the open part of it?
That's correct, yeah.
The LED face, they're not facing this road?
That is correct, nor is there any spillage.
So, what's on Slide number 7?
Slide number 7 was just, again, our attempt to be as transparent as possible. When you look at 6, I could not find the billboard, even though I knew exactly where it was. Slide number 7 magnifies that view significantly. Slide number seven magnifies that view significantly. And there, you can barely make out the panel. And I would just note that this was taken in March where the foliage was almost nonexistent, but the tree line and the distance really obfuscate the view of the back of the V. Slide number eight, now we've dispensed with the close-up. We're only using the magnified version. Again, this taken from Albert Court. And again, you can't see the panel. The tree line, in this case, both evergreen and deciduous, really obfuscates the view of the panel.
Before we move on, just to reiterate, if, let's say, the tree disappeared, this is behind the sign?
That's correct.
Great, thank you.
Yep, and again, that's worth repeating, so thank you for that. Because the back of the V is, of course, not illuminated, Mr. Chairman. And there's no spillage from the LED panels. Slide number sign, slide number nine, very similar. This is taken from 86 Crown Point, and this is further away. A different tree line, but these deciduous trees still block the view of the sign panel. And even with it being magnified, you cannot discern the sign. Getting to the end, commissioners, I thank you for your patience. This is taken from 169 Crown Point Road, and again, a considerable distance away from the sign. And even when magnified, it's almost impossible to identify the crane and panel. Last but not least, slides number 11 and 12. 11 is 140 South Breverwick Road, sorry. 1,700 feet away from the sign. And when magnified, again, almost impossible to see the sign. Same with 129 South Breverwick, also 1,700 feet away. And last but not least, 13, slide 13, Cameron Dog Park, which is also 1,500 feet away. There is no visibility of the sign.
Thank you. Okay, so given all of that setup, please walk the board through the general framework for, you mentioned two D1 variances that we would need. One for the prohibited use, because billboards are not prohibited, sorry, billboards are prohibited in this zone, and one for the second principal use on the property.
Right.
So, let's, let's walk through the D1 requirements.
And, and I apologize upfront to the board. I understand that not only are you familiar with D1 variances, but you're familiar with outdoor advertising signs that require the D1. But for the record, as this board knows, for the granting of a D1 use variance, the applicant is required to show two things. First, the affirmative criteria, often known as the special reasons. Those special reasons are typically the use is inherently beneficial, that the purposes of zoning would be advanced if you approve our application, that the site is particularly suitable for the proposed use, in this case, an outdoor advertising sign. And last but not least, if you were to deny our application, that would constitute undue hardship for the applicant. As this board knows, that's all balanced with a negative criteria. The negative criteria consists of a two-pronged test. The first prong is that if you were to grant our relief, there would be no substantial detriment to the public good. The second prong is if you were to grant our relief, there'd be no substantial impairment to the zone plan or zoning ordinance. In my professional opinion, based on my analysis of this application, all the documents are made part of it. I'm comfortable that there are sufficient proofs for this D1 use variance. I'll begin with the purposes of zoning according to 40:55 D-2. The first purpose of zoning is to encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands in the state in a manner which will promote the health, safety, morals, and general welfare. That may sound incongruous, but from my experience working with outdoor advertising signs, particularly those with the LED capacity, in my opinion, you would be advancing that purpose because of the LED formats' ability to do PSAs and promote other public purpose messages. Subsection G to provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of agricultural, residential, recreational, commercial, and industrial uses and open space, both public and private, according to their respective environmental requirements in order to meet the need of all New Jersey citizens. You heard testimony from Mr. Duarte, our civil engineer, that if you were to grant this relief, it would be an appropriate environment for this use and its build-out. From a planning perspective, I often submit to boards that it is an appropriate environment for outdoor advertising signs when they are in highway zones or highway commercial zones and/or whenever they are proximate to a major highway like I-80. Finally, subsection I to promote a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and good civic design and arrangement. Commissioners, it's my testimony that if you were to approve this application, you would advance subsection I primarily because of the modern build-out or build quality of the monopole sign with the two, the V-shaped LED sign configuration. But more importantly, the testimony offered by our civil engineer in terms of his sensitivity to the environment and site layout or site location for the proposed sign. So, that's good civic design, and in my opinion, that would advance subsection I of the purposes of zoning. Finally, commissioners, it's been held that a special reason may include the advancement of a state policy. And there's a court case, Anfuso v. Sealy, that discusses this. In my opinion, if you were to grant our relief, you would also advance the state policy for roadside sign control and outdoor advertising act, which suggests a need for a balanced control to regulate roadside signs and outdoor advertising to address technological advancements like this one of the outdoor advertising industry, promote the scenic beauty of the state, provide the safety and convenience to the public, and the need to stimulate economic, commercial activity within the state of New Jersey. You heard from two of our prior witnesses, this sign is intended to do each of those things, certainly to advance the technology that's part of the LED signage, to promote commerce, which is the intent and purpose of outdoor advertising signs, and to provide for safety and convenience, again, limiting the number of trips to the site and making signs through technology more readable, legible, and conspicuous. In terms of particular suitability, there are a number of cases that discuss this. I'll focus on a hemigi case, and it speaks to why this site is particularly suitable for this use. And you've heard testimony from both of our prior witnesses. It's particularly suitable for this use because of its proximity to Route 80 and the visibility to the motoring population on Route 80. More importantly, the state permit for which there is a rigorous review suggests that this site is appropriate for the proposed use. And I think that advance, or I submit that advances the hemigi guidelines for site suitability. In terms of the negative criteria, the first prong, there is no substantial detriment to the public good. I base that opinion on our number of factors, but most certainly on the crane test practice that we conducted, which showed that there'd be no negative impact of the proposed LED signage on the surrounding neighborhood. Focus of the LED panels is really targeted specifically to the Route 80 motorists, and the back of the sign is not illuminated. And more importantly, we looked at all the sensitive quote-unquote areas, and none of those areas would be negatively impacted by the proposed sign if you were to approve our application. The second prong is for no substantial impairment to the zone plan. We looked at your, your master plan and found no impairment to your plan. In fact, in our opinion, there may be several, there would be several goals and objectives that would be advanced if you were to approve our application. Goal number five is to preserve and enhance the township's retail, commercial, corporate research, and professional office areas. Again, the purpose of the billboard, outdoor advertising sign, is to do exactly that. It is to spur commerce, and by sharing information about your local businesses, that would be achieved. There are a couple of other goals and objectives. Proposed future land uses, business, regional, commercial. It speaks to the need to support and advance those uses. And that being redundant, but the billboard would certainly effectuate those goals. In terms of the other D1 use variance, the arguments would be exactly the same. The only thing I would offer in addition is that it has been my experience and the industry standard that typically land use codes speak to multiple principal uses on a single lot, thinking about structures and intensity. In my experience, having a outdoor advertising sign on a lot that contains a principal use like this one does, another, an office building, rather, the two do not conflict. There's no over-intensification of the site. You heard testimony already from our site engineer that in point of fact, the LED format reduces the number of trips to the site. And again, it's not a structure, or a building, rather, it's a sign. And so, while technically another principal use, it doesn't function like another principal use.
Okay, one other thing. You said you reviewed the board planner and engineer's letters?
I did.
And you heard Mr. Duarte's testimony, of course?
Yes.
So, you heard Mr. Duarte and I speak a little bit about the board engineer's comment regarding the possibility of a variance from Section 35 of the municipal land use law?
Yes.
And you also heard Mr. Duarte testify that under Section 36, which, which follows Section 35 and talks about the possible granting of variance from Section 35 requirements, that he does not believe it would, you know, it would meet the requirements under Section 36, correct?
I did.
Do you believe, well, sorry, let me back up. All the, all those requirements are already present on the site in current condition, correct?
Correct.
So, in your opinion, as a professional planner, do you believe that that variance would be necessary given that situation?
No.
And why is that?
So, under the sections of the statute mentioned by counsel and our site engineer, I referred to the same desk reference that Mr. Weiss did, the COX book. There is a bit of discussion about why it's not necessary. And I'll preface my comments by saying, it's not a typical variance. It's not the typical C1 or C2 variance, it's called a planning variance. And if you indulge me a bit, I'll just refer to my notes from my review of planning variances. Under 35, entailing practical difficulty or unnecessary hardship or where the circumstances of the case do not require the structure to be related to the street, the Board of Adjustment may, upon application or appeal, vary the application. So, if this board agrees with what you see every day at the site, what you've heard via testimony from our site engineer, then you may, you may use your authority to grant the planning variance. The court went on to say, and I quote, "Direct the issuance of a permit subject to the conditions that will provide adequate access for firefighting equipment, ambulances, and other emergency vehicles necessary for the protection of health and safety, and will protect any future street layout shown on the official map or on a general circulation plan element of the municipal master plan." I believe that's the section that counsel mentioned earlier. I would just take one last, make one last comment in terms of the case law available for this subject. And the first one that I think is perhaps most appropriate is, Klingman v. Lautman, and the court pointed out in that court case that the purpose of this kind of regulation is to assure adequate access to every structure for emergency vehicles necessary to protect, again, health, safety, and welfare. And they continued, and I quote, "This is accomplished by requiring abutting lots in front of the specified kinds of streets suitably improved or their improvement guaranteed before permits may issue." The court went on to say that the street frontage requirements could be disbended with, when provided that adequate access for emergency vehicles is assured by some lesser means of access, which will also protect any future street layout shown on the official map. And that's why Mr. Duarte's comment about the historic usage of this site and historic access to these vehicles was so important, in my opinion, we meet that burden.
Okay, and so, let's look at this two ways, just to wrap up. One is, again, all of this is already present on the site, correct?
Correct.
And what we're doing is not affecting any of that?
At all.
So, would, would you agree that we wouldn't even need that variance? It must already exist?
Correct.
But let's say the board is asking for proof on that anyway. You also believe that, that we can meet that burden?
Based on everything I just said, yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you. Is there anything else you would like to add on this, on this application?
I don't think so. I think, in my opinion, the proofs are met for both the D1 use variance, the D1 for two principal uses on a single lot, and for the planning variance.
Thank you, I have no further questions for your question.
Is there an easement to 46 from this law?
So, we, I apologize, since we just received the engineering letter, we weren't aware of this issue. We imagine there, there has to be. How else could they, you know, have this? It's a DOT, DOT owns Lot 1, so we will get that for you and provide it. That could be a condition of approval.
I can't imagine that there isn't.
I mean, they built it, you know, it has to be there. So, I have not seen it, but we will get it, and we will, and if the board wants to make that a condition, we can certainly provide that.
I'm sure there is.
I think logic, logic, what would be, this would be a very odd situation, I think, if they were not legal access there.
Do you consider billboards inherently beneficial?
I'm glad you brought that up. My professional answer would be, they are not, under the municipal land use law, deemed inherently beneficial. But there is a running conversation in the industry about that consideration only because of their ability to provide all those public benefit services.
And if this township, like other townships, as someone testified earlier, decided not to accept, you know, the emergency messages, whatever, would it be inherently beneficial?
No, and that's why the conversation is ongoing as technology approves. My testimony would be that the special reasons would be the promotion of purposes of zoning, particular suitability would be my, my suggestion.
Plus, even if a town chose not to take advantage of it, it would still be an ability for nonprofits to.
Correct.
Right, and you heard Mr. Antal's testimony that, sorry, that was way too fast, I apologize. You heard Mr. Antal's testimony that Outfront does work with those types of organizations?
All the time, yes, I did.
In A5, number 11, page 11, I just want to confirm that the house right there that has the blue recycling bin out will not see the sign in winter at night.
Mr. Chairman, which slide are you looking at?
11.
11? Yeah, that is correct, Mr. Chairman.
So, at night, with no leaves, they will not see that sign that is angled towards that house?
Correct, and there's a couple of reasons, right? First of all, the distance is at 1,700 feet. There are some changes in elevation. You've got the tree line, so in my opinion, they would not see the sign even in these foliage conditions.
Isn't that house a little bit below the grade?
It is.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, any questions from the public of this witness? No one's come forward?
Okay, so, if I could just, some, thanks, Mr. Williams. Yes, just sum up, I'll make it quick. The board has heard a bunch of these. I think you know what I'm gonna say, but, you know. So, I sincerely do appreciate, like I said earlier, we got a lot of questions that we don't normally get because this board is so experienced with billboards, and I very much appreciate that because, you know, these were great questions that I hadn't considered, and it's always good to get, to be able to open up new avenues of consideration for this kind of thing.
I thought your presentation and the handouts are excellent.
Thank you, I really appreciate that. Outfront works very hard at making sure, you know, you've heard Mr. Antal, that they are, especially in this market, they are the leader, and, you know, they want to present a sign. So, I think we're very appreciative to hear that from you, Mr. Chairman. Again, just to wrap up, Outfront proposes to construct a, what we're gonna call a 14 by 48 outdoor advertising sign. Of course, it's actually slightly smaller due to the size of the LED panels, at a height of 60 feet from the grade of the property at Block 722, Lot 2. It's going to show only to Route 80. That's what the DOT permit requires. Again, as I mentioned, if we're gonna show to 46, we would have to go through a whole other process that we do not do, and that is not the intention. It cannot and will not show to Route 46, only Route 80. Of course, you know, we talked a lot about the tree cutting. That will be sorted out at a later date. Again, we will make sure the board sees every final, you know, every final consideration from DOT and DEP on that front. Where there's conditions, whether we need to come back to amend the approval, et cetera, et cetera, if, if the board is so kind as to grant one, et cetera, et cetera. We will make sure the board is with us every step of the way on that, and...
How do you propose to accomplish that?
I, I think what makes the most sense, Mr. Johnson, is, would be that the condition be that we get the VCM approvals and whatever. the condition be that we get, um, the VCM approvals and whatever approvals from DEP are required, and that way, if we can't get them, of course, we would have to come back to the board to amend the approval, and if we do get them, we would submit them to yourself and the board, everyone could review and, and make sure that we meet the conditions of the approval.
So you're asking, then, for permission to, to, for the, for the variance?
Yes.
Subject to you getting the approvals that you are seeking from both the DEP and the DOT, and then coming back again for further final approval by this board before you actually construct?
Well, what I'm saying is, you know, if we meet the conditions, then-
Conditions being DEP and DOT approval?
Right.
I'm sorry, yeah.
You got it, yeah, um, for the tree cutting.
Right.
Then I think if we meet the conditions, um, unless I'm mistaken, we, you know, the, we could just go forward, correct, as long as we submitted all that to the board.
Their, their requirements on the tree cutting and that might be different than ours, though, could that be possible?
That's my concern, that you heard concern from this board about tree cutting-
Yeah.
And they, and they haven't been presented with a tree cutting plan.
We have not.
Right, and, uh, we, uh, you know, you mentioned in the beginning, you were concerned about another, uh, billboard, oh, operator cutting trees without approval, certainly we will, we would not do that. Um, and so, you know, if the board is concerned that the DOT-
Township Forests are-
If, if the board is concerned that the DOT approval does not comply with the type of tree cutting the township would require, then certainly, like I said, we can, you know, we can come back and we can discuss that.
Well, we haven't, we haven't seen a tree cutting plan.
No, we, we don't have one.
So, I, I cannot, uh, in conscience, what you're, what you're saying, Mr. Johnson, is, that would be one of the, uh, qualifiers of approval, in my opinion, that we have to see that before we give the final approval of this.
Yes, I, I think that makes the most sense, we just didn't want to hold things up waiting for that approval.
I understand that you made the decision to come here first-
Yeah.
-rather than go to the DOT and the DEP first, but you then put this board in a position with potentially approving this without having that information.
Well, that's why I would say, I think the condition makes the most sense, because we don't want to put you in a position where you're concerned that we're, you know, kind of going around you. Um, the board should get final say, this is in your town. So we, DOT with VCMs does like to have, you know, some kind of local approval before they move forward. It's not required under the statute, but it is, I would say, heavily preferred. Um, I worked for a number of years for DOT as a, as a, sorry, as a deputy attorney general, so I'm, you know, I can, I can tell you from my experience, they heavily prefer that we do it in this order. But again, however the board would prefer, this billboard will be in your town, on your street, on your, on property in, in the town, and so you, like I said, if you want us to come back and show you it, talk about it, make sure that you agree with the plan, or you want to amend it, as long as, of course, it wouldn't violate what DOT is requiring, um, we are happy to do that.
So you would be okay with that type of condition, which would require you to come back here to discuss the tree removal?
Yes, and I, I just got a nod from Mr. Antall to confirm that.
So do we vote on it?
Yeah, as a condition.
As a condition.
As a condition, yeah.
They have to come back.
Yeah.
And then if we didn't like the tree cutting plan, we couldn't deny it.
You could amend the plan as long as it doesn't violate, you just, you can't obviously violate something DOT is requiring.
Understood.
Yeah.
But do we have an out, is what my question is.
You could either amend it, or you could say, this isn't gonna work, so theoretically your options are, well, we talked about this earlier, the one face-
You go to the one side, yeah, yeah, yeah.
DOT isn't gonna have a requirement, you guys can go in there and ask it to cut some trees down.
I, I'm just, you know, you're right, but I don't want-
You made an argument, it doesn't exist.
I, I don't want to, you know, I don't want to put, I don't want to say something and then something, you never know, Mr. Chadwick, something insane could happen.
Right, right. Be sad when I'm pretty good.
This, from my perspective, too, on the, I, the sixty-foot thing, so right now, our concern here is for Precipiny not looking like the Las Vegas Strip, okay? And, and we're getting, uh, I mean, Outfront, this is a wonderful presentation, you guys did a great job, a great company, okay?
Thank you.
Uh, but, okay, the sixty feet, okay, we haven't discussed a lot, but that's, that's the professional testimony right now, is that the minimum requirement that we, they would have to meet their liability of that sign in that location.
My, I, I don't want to speak for the witnesses, uh, my understanding, and they can tell me if they disagree from a professional perspective, Tiago, George, John, that, that is correct, sixty feet is the minimum that, that-
Initially, it was at ninety, it could come down to thirty, I mean, to sixty, now it's as low as it can go.
We heard board comments, and essentially, our decision was, let's lower it as much as we feasibly can while still effectuate the use, of course, as you know, we have to effectuate the use of the West Wire.
Obviously, no, we understand.
So, yes, sixty is the minimum.
Okay.
Oh, just, you know, finish wrapping up.
Okay.
So, anyway, um, yeah, we talked about this, but the location was selected after, you know, Outfront did a lot of testing and review and analyses, of course, again, we got the DOT permit, it will conform with all those very strict regulations, um, and we, uh, and will make sure that it meets all those safety requirements. We, you know, we talked a lot about the protocols, I know, you know, I think we beat those deaths, so I'm not gonna go through them again, but, um, you also heard from Mr. Antall that the billboard does not require much maintenance, you heard that from Mr. Kubart and Mr. Williams as well, just four times a year for routine maintenance, um, there's really no way to interfere with the sign otherwise, um, and, uh, there, you know, the benefits are the crispier imaging, as well as the directed light, um, it operates through, you know, these internal lubers that direct the light into the roadway, prevent sky, prevent skyglow, prevent glare, et cetera, um, and, uh, this is, you know, you heard from Mr. Duarte and Mr. Williams, that this is essentially a passive use that doesn't really require any of the typical site plan concerns that you would see, um, on something like, you know, at a big application like this, um, the copy is changed remotely from, you know, as Mr. Antall testified, the actual program is done all the way in Washington, but, you know, it gets instantaneously to the board, of course, um, there's no traffic, there's no stormwater issues, there's no, there's no noise generated, there's no sewer concern, et cetera. The, you heard the proofs as to the D1 variance, you just heard them, so I don't think I need to repeat them too much, but, um, you know, Mr. Williams did testify as to the critical suitability as to the negative criteria, et cetera, et cetera, and, you know, I see the board nodding, we, we can, you know, we can leave it there, you just heard it. Um, so, just to finalize here, um, I think this is a good use for this site, I think it does not, uh, it meets the requirements of the two D1 variances, and if the board is gonna require that, that planning variance for the, the section thirty-five, the municipal land use law, I think we need that as well, that's not really a concern. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, at this time, I would ask if there are any members of the public who wish to give comment on this application, uh, to please come forward. Okay, no one's come forward?
Are you coming forward, sir?
My name is, uh-
Can you come all the way up? Grab a mic, I think you gotta get sworn.
Yep, you're gonna make a comment either for or against this application, please raise your right hand to swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
State your name, spell your last name, and provide us with your address, please.
Thomas Torro, T O R T O, four nineteen Park Avenue South, New York. Good evening, I'm the attorney for the property owner, and I just wanted to tell the board that, uh, the owners fully join in the application, I have media, and, um, we asked that, um, the board approve the application, and I think that Mr. Weiss did a, and his team, fantastic job of making a successful presentation, uh, for the board. I think they covered all the issues, just the legal issues, and social issues, all the other issues, and the owners, uh, look, look forward to the board's approval. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So all the guys in the building are happy with this, right? Is there a need to go into conference on this one?
No need.
No need?
The only question I have is, should we bring the township forester to be aware of, uh, tree cutting?
Does he have any authority in this parcel of land?
Well, you're, you're saying you want, you want to be able to-
You know what, you can revert to his consent.
Excuse me?
You can't change it, but you can revert it.
No, but you may want his advice.
Yeah.
Because what do we know about trees?
I know a lot about them.
I don't know anything about trees.
Okay.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't object to that, if that's, you know, the more likely.
Yeah, I think that's-
Other than that, I think it's a simple request. Good, good application, I would be for it.
Is that your statement?
Sounds like it.
Okay. Um, all right, Nora, I guess we're-
Well, I, I don't think we've calmed it all yet, we have to calmer all on what we're going forward here, so-
Well, yeah.
Are you asking me to draft a resolution to work with Mr. Mike?
Okay, right.
That we would vote for approval on?
I gotta, I gotta blow the dust off my, my zoning shoulders here.
Very good.
Okay, um, so, we're gonna ask Mr. Johnson to draft a, a resolution-
Of approval.
Of approval.
Right.
That incorporates the, uh, the conditions.
I just want to be clear about one thing, Mr. Chairman, um, did, did we make a determination as to the, the planning variance? I just want to know if we should expect, you know, that in approval or not.
Um, I don't, I don't see it being an issue, uh, it was kind of a check-the-box kind of thing, because we're not dealing with a, a flag lot through the woods or something, but it was just something that, you know, the, the statute does require, um, and I believe that the section thirty-five starts with something to the effect that, uh, that you cannot get a construction permit for a structure.
Actually, any permit.
Right, so, so, and again, it was just a matter of, again, checking the box.
No, I, I appreciate that you called it out, I just wanted to make sure-
Yeah, it's not, it's, it's not a typical one.
Yeah, definitely not, thank you.
Okay.
And if you could get me the easement, which probably exists?
We, I have to imagine.
Perhaps the gentleman in the back can help you out?
I am going to talk in the, as soon as we're done, the, um, look, it's, the thing is, it's DOT property, there is for sure some memorialization of the access, and we will get that to you.
All right, so we had a, a motion to have Mr. Johnson draft, uh, a motion of approval inclusive of the conditions with the DEP and DOT, um, and the forester, do I have a second?
Second. And, and a further review of the, the tree removal plan, okay?
That, that was part of the conditions, yeah, yeah. All right, seconded by-
Jaskiewicz, seconded.
Jaskiewicz?
Berkleix.
Yes.
Ragniani.
Yes.
Jaskiewicz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Teddy.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Nice job, congratulations.
I'll be in touch. I'll send you, I'll send you draft.
Motion to adjourn.
Move.[1788.01]